I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Glass.
Here.
Vice Chairman Hewitt.
Here.
Chairman Montano.
Here.
Commissioner Putnam.
Here.
And Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Tonight we have absent alternate hall Commissioners Philip and Patterson.
Okay. Consent calendar. Amanda?
I just want one announcement really quick. Chairman, I think the door closes for applying for the vacancy on the Planning Commission Friday. I believe we've had two applicants so far, so if anyone out there is interested in serving the remainder of Commissioner Morris's term because she's leaving us, you want to get that in by Friday.
And they can get the applications on the City website?
I think so. If not, they're at the front desk here at City Hall.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Approve the resolution?
Oh, the consent calendar? Okay.
Consent calendar.
I make commotion to approve the Minister of Land's meeting.
Second.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Glass.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Hewitt.
Yes.
Chairman Montano.
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam.
Yes.
And Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Morris.
Morris.
I'm sorry, Morris.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda?
Our next item is a public hearing for an application for a mitigated negative declaration for the Five Corners Improvement Project. I'm going to turn this over to Public Works Director Bob Greenlaw, and he's going to do a presentation for us.
Good afternoon. Bob Greenlaw, Director, Public Works. I'm joined by Ryan Birdsey of Birdseye Planning Group. He is our environmental specialist for the project. So as Amanda said, the item before you today is the public hearing for the application for a site plan coastal development permit and mitigated neg deck for the Five Corner Project that's right out in front of City Hall here. The project description for that is, "The proposed project is intended to address operational and safety deficiencies at the Five Corner intersection in the city of Avalon located on Catalina Island, California. Project area comprises a segment of Tremont Street generally between Sumner Avenue to the northwest and Clemente Avenue to the southeast and a cluster of intersections including Sumner, Country Club, and Avalon Canyon Road. Project scope includes the construction of two mini dual roundabouts, dual mini roundabouts, excuse me, intersections, construction of new sidewalk segments to close the existing gaps, construction of six pedestrian crossings. Improvements would also extend southwest along Avalon Canyon Road generally to the end of City Hall and the fire station complex and southeast along Tremont Street just to the west of Catalina Avenue intersection. The purpose of the mini roundabout is to channelize and calm traffic and provide shorter, safer, and more convenient pedestrian crossings. To improve the project's overall geometric and road surface design and provide service treatment for the storm flows, the existing concrete rectangular pipe that crosses or box covert that crosses the intersection that looks like a sidewalk, but it keeps the elevation high and awkward, it will be replaced by two 30-inch pipes that will be relocated in the roadway to allow that intersection to be, have a 4% cross grade instead of that substantial crosswalk that it has right now. The pipes will extend south to the intersection approximately 400 feet down Tremont to about Descanso Avenue, and then it will once again intercept where the drainage channel is right now. An existing covered segment of the drainage will also be opened and restored. That segment and the adjoining segment generally south of Tremont Street, Descanso Avenue intersection will be widened and restored to convey and also to treat those storm flows. All flows will discharge into the main concrete line regional channel system as occurs under the existing conditions that goes out to the ocean. The project area generally comprises that segment of Tremont Street here out in front all the way from Clemente here to the intersection and from the intersection to the end of where our city property is at the fire station. So the project was initially focused on pedestrian improvements to the Five Corner intersection. That's how we received a grant from Metro on that. Yet as the project was developed, it utilized complete street concepts. A complete street concept starts with all the traffic modes given an equal priority. So, pads, bikes, trucks, transit, autoettes, any fire trucks, city trucks hauling floats through the intersection, all given equal priority. And then what we do is we create spaces in a system that yields the greatest benefit to all those modes and makes them work in a system. The project has had significant community outreach with two presentations to City Council at the 30% design level and the 60% design level. Also, the team held a public workshop here in the City Council chambers for the public and received input, and then we also held individual stakeholder meetings with such entities like the Onin Company with golf cart rentals, with all the city departments. So those type of stake, the school district, Tremont Apartments here. So we held stakeholder meetings to get what their goals were for the project. The last check-in with council resulted in a move, a direction to move ahead with the project with the plans as presented and the 60% design, and that's what we have with the environmental document tonight. So for the purposes of a sequa document, the 60% design level is the stage where the environmental document is approved, because that's when we're deciding what alternatives are. And then after that 60% design is done and the environmental document is approved, that's when we start detailing the plans, and we add all those details to the plans. Okay, so, let me see, I think I got to back up a minute here. Oh, here it is. There we go. Thanks, Jordan. Okay, there's a cover sheet for the project. Okay, so let's first go over some of the problems that were identified with the intersection. So, always stop, unbalanced stop, and an unbalanced. So there's three different configurations in close proximity there. That's where those circles are. It was awkwardly configured. It does not meet any design standard, so it was this kind of hodgepodge of what was built, you know, as things went together here, developed over time. And then there's a wide central section allowing diagonal movement, so there's a lot of pavement out there. That's what that's stating. So you have a lot of alternative movements, and what we try to do to make a area of pavement safer for all modes is just like we did at the Sumner Beacon intersection by Vons there. You see that we put some traffic calming features there, like that meeting in the middle and those crosswalks, so everybody is kind of assigned to space so they knew which place to operate. That's the same kind of concept that we did here. Okay, well, we realized when we looked at this that there was 38 vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points and 28 vehicle-to-ped conflict points, and you can see by the color there, the blue is the pedestrian pass, the red is the vehicle pass. So that's 64 potential conflicts you, as a user, have to process as you're going through that intersection. A standard four-way stop is 32 conflict points with ped and vehicles. So you can see that this is really something that could be quite problematic, so, but I think the reason that it exists, you haven't had significant issues on the island because you have slower speeds, you also, you're open vehicles, so you can somewhat say, hey, I'm going there, and everybody's pointing their way, you know? If this was something with a high-speed intersection, it wouldn't work at all. So, what did we do? We came up with a two-mini roundabout because we understood that there was two intersections here, and what we tried to do was take away some of that pavement and assign space, so that complete street alignment. So what that resulted in is 19 total conflicts. So that's less than what would be your, on a four-way stop, and now we have five legs coming to this, now we're from, four-way stop would be 32, now we're down to 19. Usually on a single roundabout with four legs, you only have eight conflict points that you have to process. So this is slightly more than a standard roundabout because that's two mini roundabouts, but you also are processing those as you go through each roundabout. You're not taking all 19 of those conflicts on at a time. So this is a proof of concept so that it shows that, you know, our most critical vehicle here is for our larger fire truck. If we put this through, then any other vehicle that we have in this community would find its way through there. So what this is, is we have software in AutoCAD that allows us to do the wheel tracking, and those central islands, so those peach-colored central islands there, they allow, they're just have, they have a little bit of elevation, but they're allowed to be mounted by vehicles, okay? So if you drove over them in a golf cart, it would be abrupt, just like those speed bumps that I put out in the middle of Sumner Avenue, okay? But if a larger vehicle goes across it like a fire truck, no problem, they can just drive right through it, okay? That's the same concept as when you see us hauling the floats there, which are 12 feet wide, and we're coming early in the morning to take them down the harbor from up in our warehouse, that we're able to take up the whole intersection and be able to still transport those. So that's why we came up with this concept. Okay, so this one's a little more difficult to see, but what I wanted to do is kind of pan out and show you really what the extents of this project are. So it goes, like I said, all the way down to Clemente, has sidewalks on both sides, has parking up against the City Hall property, five-foot sidewalks on each side, new curb gutter sidewalk, and new paving on Tremont from Clemente to the intersection. It has the dual mini roundabouts, it has high-vis crosswalks. It, roundabouts have a central island that causes you to deflect when you go into a yield. It's a yield on entry, so the right-of-way is counterclockwise. You've got the right-of-way in there, and you can circulate around as many times as you want, and you have the right-of-way. The vehicles entering have to yield the right-of-way to the circulating traffic, and then it's when you have, accept a gap. If there's a gap that you accept that you feel comfortable to enter that roundabout, you get in, and so that's called a gap acceptance. And so that's how they operate, and so they have, the features on them are a central island and a splitter island, okay? So it includes lighting, drainage, and also some aesthetic features, which I'll go over right now. So it has, this is a little bit of the landscaping design that we would add to some of the trees that are there, and here's some of the species of plants that we're looking at, a lot of natives there, but also some plants that add a little bling to it, you know, some color. So, and more of that will be worked on as we work into that 95% design, and we will come in front of council with that 95% design. I just wanted to show you also, this is the aesthetic features that will be within the roundabout. All the roundabout will be pavers, will be traffic-rated pavers, so that allows us to be able to do maintenance on this because we don't have hot mix on the island, so we don't want to put hot mix in the roundabout for our utilities. When we do utility repairs, we can pull up the pavers and do our utility repairs and put them back down. In that very central island, that's mosaics, and what our landscape architect came up with is since this is Five Corners, the sea urchin has five legs, and so that's the sea urchin design there, and so he's working on those features, but that will be mosaics. So it really should be really a sense of place when this is done. You're going to have, you know, nice widened sidewalks, you'll have colorful, varying colors of pavers that will lead you to the area where you need to drive or walk. It will have artistic features in the middle, and it'll have that landscape. So it should be something very nice for another sense of place. So here's a little bit of, kind of the bling, what it looks like. You know, so you see that central island slightly raised, you see the splitter islands that are right behind that crosswalk, the high-vis crosswalk, you see the different colors of pavers, you see, you know, very much widened sidewalks. So, I think that that's what I have to present, and what I'm going to ask Ryan to come up, just to talk just very briefly about the sequa process, so we can put that on record.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Birdsey, Principal on our Birdseye Planning Group, but I was retained by the city of Avalon through ESG Engineering to provide environmental planning support for the project to ensure that we were in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And as part of that process, we prepared a biological resources technical report, we also prepared a cultural resources technical report, and reached out to the Native American tribes as required per AB 52, as well as the, as required for standard protocol for cultural resource documentation. And we also prepared the initial study, which in part was based on a traffic study that was prepared by W Trans for the overall project. So we put together the initial study, and the only comment we received was actually during cultural resources consultation earlier on in the process from the Gabrieleino tribes, and they reached out and indicated that there's Native American sensitivity on the island. And all they requested was that the monitoring or Native American monitoring occurred during excavation of the project for removal of the, or movement of the utilities and so on and so forth. So we included that in the initial study for, as mitigation to address cultural resource sensitivity issues. We sent the out, sent the document out through the State Clearinghouse July 1st, and it circulated through various state agencies for 30 days. We received no comments on it, which was good news. We did incorporate some mitigation measures related to biological resources. We'll have to address those with the Regional Water Quality Control Board as we're removing the portion of that soft bottom channel that's currently out there along Tremont Street. But other than that, environmentally, it was fairly clear and straightforward. So we'll sign the, assuming it's approved, we'll record the notice of determination for the project, and that will be the end of the sequa process for the project, and from then we'll move forward with the next phase. So that's where we are with the overall process. Happy to answer any questions when the time is right for that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, like I said, we'll answer any questions, so I'm going to guess have the public comment.
How wide is Tremont now, or how are you picking up two sidewalks on either side and still enough room for all the vehicles?
Okay, so I think the cross-section's going to be a five-foot sidewalk, that includes the curb, 20 feet of two-lane traffic, so one in each direction. There's not going to be a bike lane because the bike, we're slowing speeds here that it could be a share-o, you know, so the bikes merge right with the traffic. And then it will be a seven-foot parking stall, six-foot, yeah, seven-foot, and then a five-foot sidewalk. So that'll be five, 27, 32, and then another five. Okay?
How wide is it now?
We have public right-of-way, I believe, 60, okay? So between the, the paved section now is about 22 feet.
That's why.
Okay. But there's additional space that's also available on the other side of the wall. The wall's going to be removed, okay? And then that grade is going to be lowered down sidewalk right next to the street, you know, so you won't have to step up to walk along that side of the road. It seems like when people use Tremont, you know, they come out of the flats, and then right now they're forced into the roadway. And then we don't want to build just a sidewalk on one side of the road because then you'd be forcing people to come out of those streets, and it seems like it's not just one or, one person at a time, it's families that are walking down during the visitor season. We want to keep them on the sidewalk, so that's why a five-foot sidewalk on each side.
So then you build a wall back?
Yeah, we're actually going to be doing some grading to the city property here that will allow that relief to happen where there will be right to the grade of the road.
Well, you're going to make a slope.
Yeah, there would be a slope on the, yeah, there would be a slope on the city property, a two-to-one slope, and that's a vegetated slope. And then it has a nice flat area on the city property. Okay, which is, let me see if I can move that. That's the area right by City Hall there, so right in that general area, and there'll be a flattened area right in that area there, and then the grades pretty well match up as we get down further down to Clemente. Okay?
Bob, just to clarify, the drainage channel is on the Tremont Street easement?
Yes.
Street easement?
Yes.
The drainage channel is.
So we have a public right-of-way, and then we have an easement for the drainage and the utilities there. So we're using all of that, okay? So it allows us to do those things in a complete street approach that's underutilized property right now, so we're using that property at its highest and best use. So instead of just having, you know, the K-rail very unecetically, you know, now we have your sidewalk right next to where the roadway is, like a standard sidewalk.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Can you go back to the picture where you had the splitter island and the middle one? Yeah. That would be good, that one.
Okay.
That one. So how much weight do you think that material can hold?
That material right there could take a full fire truck, take an H20 loading. Okay, we're designing it for that.
Right.
And it has been tested in other communities.
And I do like the one you have down by Vons. It's really working well. I like that.
Yeah, this one will be out of mosaics, so it actually's been tested in other communities, and they've, the artist that the landscape architect's working with has actually done this in the roadways before.
And it can handle?
It can handle H20 loading, which is your regular commercial load that you would, yeah.
And then you answered a couple of questions. I was wondering about the floats that come down.
Yes.
From Falls Canyon and how they make the turn. So any truck like a fifth-wheel with a low-boy trailer on the back?
Yes.
Or the floats, and if he's coming Tremont and he has to go up Country Club Drive, do they, can they just come across that?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, they would mount that. They would mount it at a very slow speed, maybe three to five miles an hour.
It would kind of hang on, and then you come through.
It would go like this, you know, because you're talking in elevation that it's four to six inches in elevation up, and it kind of, and you'll see it where it increases in elevation toward the center, kind of like a mounded approach, yes.
Okay. And then I'm wondering about the flow, like the mud flow, you know how we have heavy rains that come from this Avalon Canyon Road? Where are we directing the mud flow and the water so it doesn't come down here into your beautiful?
Okay, we did do our hydrology and hydraulic studies, and then it will.
It's behind it?
Yes, yes.
Through all the channels?
Yes.
And then, how about the school and their crosswalks? Since the kids are the ones that are coming through, they're going to kind of blend in with this?
Okay, so let's see if we can, you see the, you know, we have the existing crosswalk right out here in front of City Hall on Avalon Canyon, and what we're going to do is we're going to match that up a little, you know, we're going to relocate it probably about another 10 feet or so on the other side of the intersection, and we're kind of toying with that here whether that may be a raised crosswalk.
For the kids.
To calm traffic, so we're working through some of those concepts.
Get them into a pattern also for walking out.
Yes, and it looks like it'd be a safer crossing if it was slightly relocated that. And so that was one of the improvements on Avalon Canyon that we were really focusing on to make it safer because we realized the use of the park and that at night we need to have additional parking for park use, so we cross there, and we cross there sometimes when it's dark, so we need to make sure that that's safer.
One last question. It's okay. At Field of Dreams where they're storing the materials for the contractors, I know the main Field of Dreams, but what's the one little spot that they're marking here for staging for, by the school? The one by the school is what I'm wondering. What is that?
Okay, so that's like a contractor lay-down yard?
Mm-hmm.
So for the project, for our environmental document, we have to identify any lay-down yards we do for the contractors. So the contractor for this project may have one or two or three potential staging sites so that they could move in their equipment and not impact the community.
All right. Everything looks good to me. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
So you want to open the public hearing, case it's public?
The public hearing is now open. Would anybody in the audience care to discuss this item?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On one slide, they show a bus stop kind of at the top of Eucalyptus on Tremont. Can you bring that up? It looks, I'm just wondering if it's a real bus stop and how, it seems like it's going to create a rather dangerous situation with cars having to go around it, not to mention the noise right next to a residence. And I'll just ask my three questions at once, and then is there a widening of the sidewalk at the, between Sumner and Eucalyptus on Tremont, along those houses? And then the third question, if they're coming down City Road and they're going left or they're coming down Country Club Road, are they going to be able to take a shortcut and bypass the roundabout and go into oncoming traffic? Because I was curious why you didn't extend some of the, like the park and other properties so that you could create some T-intersections that would greatly reduce your conflict with pedestrians? Because the way it is now, only if people follow these rules of staying on the sidewalk, the car going exactly where they're supposed to be, does it potentially make it safe, but the way I see people drive golf carts, they kind of zigzag all over the place. I understand you have raised areas, but you still have a large width where people are just going to take shortcuts, so to speak.
Sir, can you, sir, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Louis Scuduto at 348 Eucalyptus.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's two transit stops in the project, and there's two transit stops that exist right now, and so all we're doing is relocating those. And we need to be, make ourselves aware is, those transit stops may not get used very much right now, but we're trying to build a transit system, and we're trying to encourage people to use transit, so we need to provide for that. And so where the transit stop is being relocated is at the entrance of Eucalyptus, because Eucalyptus is not a street you can drive through. It has a gate, and so what we want to do is make some enhancements to that entrance and actually push that gate back, make an artistic, aesthetic-looking gate that would be visually appealing, but also what that does is it allows maybe some benches to be put at that entrance there to share that. So we would have enough space for our full fire vehicle to get through or any other access needs there, but it's not something like it's a regular street entrance. It's a gated pedestrian-only access. So we're going to work on making that a full ADA-accessible transit stop. The other transit stop is really already here on the other side, but we want to improve the transit stop on Avalon Canyon Road and also move it away from the intersection slightly so that we don't have a large vehicle right next to the intersection. So we're going to move it up the road here another 20, 30 feet so that it's out of the intersection, because when you get that large or profile vehicle stopping for four minutes, maybe waiting for it to be on schedule, now it's blocking the pads that are crossing. So that's why we want to make sure that everybody has that site distance. As far as the width of the sidewalk that's up against the houses there on Tremont, we have the ability to widen that sidewalk and also to add some additional landscaping. You see that the paving is actually going to start narrowing in there with, you see the arcs of the roundabouts there, that curve that line there at the top of the plan, where you see the cir- of the plan, where you see the circular, and then there's a six-inch curb at the top. Okay? Um, so there's an area that can be either widened for paving, it's an opportunity for landscape architect to work on some widened areas for sense of place for, or, um, also for landscape, landscaping on those slopes that go down. As far as somebody taking on, uh, this and going, uh, contra-flow, so against the flow of the roundabout, you have splitter islands, so, I guess, um, if you went on the totally wrong, sorry, on the wrong side of the road and went on the other side of the splitter island, um, you know, you would be doing an illegal turn, but otherwise, if you stayed on the right side of the splitter island, you would have to mount that with a golf cart that you would find very uncomfortable, just like the speed bumps in Sumner that we just put in. And then, once you enter that traffic, you're gonna find it very much natural to not shortcut that, cause the flow, especially when it's, um, like eight o'clock out here, you'll see the flow, you'll, you'll be looking for that gap, that gap acceptance, to be able to enter that flow and then just follow that flow. One thing about a roundabout that you, that's different from now is you don't, you just yield, and so if you, um, see that it's clear, you just roll right through, all the moves you're doing, and it really is a, a work of art when you, you see the system working, because people are just flowing, all the modes of traffic are flowing in a system. So, that's what we're really trying to achieve here, is that system where it just flows. Okay? And I think, uh, when we get it, every other community I built these in, people get it, and they get it right away, and they really like them, when they're done, and that's with a full roundabout, the way it's designed, not just a circle that's, like, you know, something like, um, the Sombrero Circle, that's just a circle, you know, with a, it's not designed with the splitter islands, not all the features of a full roundabout, of a modern, United States roundabout. Any other questions?
Anyone else in the public? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Would anyone care to...
Make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, okay. Anyone second?
Anybody have any other questions on that?
I'll second that.
Um, I'll call for vote.
Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm Bob John.
Okay, Amanda?
Our next item is a, excuse me.
Oh, I think we have...
Goodbye.
Sandy, okay.
Sandy's, um, accusing herself for a property conflict. Excuse me, Commissioner Putnam. So our next item is a public hearing for a request for approval of a conditional use permit and the coastal development permit associated with that conditional use permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room or rooms without table board at 134 Whitley. The owner is Jason and Amy Parret. I never know how to say your name, Parret. I apologize. This is in the high-density residential zone. This property did receive a conditional use permit several years ago to rent the downstairs, and now they're coming back to rent, to be able to rent the upstairs portion of the property. You have the saturation map in your packet, which shows that this property does not oversaturate any other surrounding properties. We are recommending that you grant the coastal development permit for the property and the conditional use permit for transient rental. We have not received any comments, um, regarding this application, and the owners are in the audience if you have any questions.
Um, okay, any questions? Anybody have any questions here? Okay. Um, Amanda, we haven't received any, any, on the one that he currently has, any complaints or anything?
No.
Okay, great. Um, I'm gonna open up public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to speak on this, um, item?
Jason and Amy Parret, 134 Whitley, thank you, Planning Commission, for considering our permit. We did, uh, get a CUP about two years ago, uh, we, we manage it ourselves, we will continue to, our, it's our plans to continue to manage it ourselves. Uh, we have over two hundred reviews on Airbnb and we have a 4.9 rating. We've also always made our TOT payments on time, and to our knowledge, we have never had a police officer come to our house.
That's always nice to hear. And I can't believe it's been two years already.
I know.
Okay, thank you for that.
And we do plan on continuing to live in the community.
Okay. Um, anybody else would like to speak? Thank you, Jason and Amy, um, on this item. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Anyone on the commission have any questions or would like to make a motion on this item?
Any questions?
Yeah, I think you answered it, yeah.
I've been here, done that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. Anyone like to second? Call for vote.
Um, Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
All ayes. Thank you. Okay. Um, Amanda?
Um, our next item is also an application for a conditional use permit for transient rental at 348 Eucalyptus. This, um, is in the high-density residential zone. The owner is Grace and Louise Scaduto. Scaduto. I'm really having problems with names tonight, I apologize. Um, this also includes a conditional, um, the coastal development permit, there, the saturation map shows where this property is in relation to other properties on Eucalyptus, and it does not create oversaturation on the surrounding year-round occupied properties. We are recommending approval of this application. Um, sorry. How many bedrooms is it, Louise? Two bedrooms, so the occupants would, would be recommending two per bedroom plus six. And the owner is here, if you have any questions?
Two per bedroom plus?
Two per bedroom plus two, excuse me, for a total of six.
Okay.
That was a test.
Okay. Uh, and, so are you, are you managing, are you here on the island?
Hi, I'm occasionally on the island. At the moment, uh, we would manage it ourselves, uh, we still need to do some work to the property, but we'd probably have CIVR management manage it, cause they do a very good job. You know, we, we work with Corina on some other properties, uh, and I think that's really the way to go.
Because the application, we would need like a property manager, or a phone number, somebody that is on the island at all times when your permit is issued.
Yeah, when it's issued, well, we probably would bank it, I think it's the term, for a year. We wouldn't, what's the correct term where you, you're not using, using it?
If you want to bank it, then you can provide the city with a year-round lease, where you're leasing it to a year-round tenant, and then you can bank the permit.
Okay, so I...
Would you be banking it, cause you're, cause you're remodeling it?
Yeah, we need to update it and remodel it. We've used it just for a vacation rental for over fif- uh, not, excuse me, we've used it for a private vacation home for fifty years, and now my siblings are getting older and they're no longer using it, so we would like to use the money to, to improve the property from the vacation rental.
Just make sure that there's a, a property manager on the island.
We will, yeah. We definitely use Corina.
Okay.
And we have in the past, we've had a couple, this situation occur, um, and, previously where they got their conditional use permit, they wanted to do some improvements to the property, it starts to stretch out a project that's getting close to a year, and the city has allowed them to kind of put their permit on hold and not start the clock ticking for the year's use restriction until they had finished...
Okay.
The, um, work on the property.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anyone in the audience care to talk on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Anyone have any questions or like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with all the standard conditions.
Okay.
I'll second that, that's fine.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Glass?
Yep.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, we were asked to pull the Inclusionary Housing Code discussion right now, the city's in, having some internal conversations about possible changes to the code, so we've pulled that item until some of those internal decisions can be reached. So, we won't be hearing that item this evening, that leaves us with transient rental discussion. We did provide you, um, the two things that we brought back to you this evening are the, all the, all the current requirements for transient rentals, so that you could review those and let us know if there were any changes to our standard conditions of approval for transient rentals that you might want to reconsider. We also had a second staff report from the city attorney's office regarding saturation, and I unfortunately was lapsed and I didn't give it to Rocio, so she could include it in your packets. It's just a little more than one page, so I think what I'd like to do is actually read it into the record, if that's okay? So this was, um, discussing the saturation criteria that we have been discussing on past meetings. So the city attorney's office has prepared this report in response to the Planning Commission's July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, discussing, discussion regarding possible amendments to the city's municipal code for how saturation for transient rental units in the city could be used to regulate transient occupancy conditional use permits. At that July Planning Commission meeting, the commission expressed that it was in favor of imposing a citywide cap on the total number of CUPs and institute a one-on-one-off approach under amended saturation limits currently being considered. Additionally, the commission was in favor of considering a percentage limit for transient rental units on all streets within the city. The purpose of this item is for the commission to discuss further and provide any additional direction to be considered as part of a proposed overhaul of the city's existing codified transient rental regulations. Once the commission provides more direction, the recommendations will be brought to the city council for discussion, and if the city council concurs, an ordinance would be adopted making the changes. Initially, the commission should establish what the cap on CUPs should be. Once established, the commission should determine what the saturation limit should be for each street. While our office has reviewed a number of other cities' transient rental unit regulations, we are not aware of another jurisdiction that has instituted restrictions to the same precise degree as a possible percentage cap on city streets. As described in the staff report presented to the commission last month on this item, Pacific Grove comes closest by capping short-term rental licenses to two hundred and fifty and imposing a zone of exclusion of fifty-five lineal feet from an existing short-term rental parcel boundary. Additionally, and based on our review of publicly noticed agenda materials, the city of Carmel is looking into possible percentage limits for housing projects where transient rental units would be permissible. The commission should consider how it would seek to institute a street-wide saturation standard when there are some streets that are significantly more populated with residential units or longer than others. While a flat saturation percentage by street would provide more equitable restrictions than just a numbered cap on city streets, the commission should also consider where there are permissible exceptions that would be instituted for areas where there is a high volume of complexes, such as on the streets where the Hamilton Cove complex sits. The commission should also consider and discuss regulations that provide a procedure for incoming applications. The commission discussed in July a one-on-one-off process. One way to enforce this rule would be to prohibit any new CUPs on a street that has met or exceeded its percentage cap. I'm sorry, I think I swallowed a bug. Has exceeded its percentage cap until the percentage was under the cap and allow a CUP on a separate street where the cap has not been exceeded. This would require a waiting list to be developed and would require a saturation, saturation analysis for each application. This would help distribute CUPs throughout the city and not burden certain areas with CUPs. With additional direction, the city attorney's office will prepare and provide further legal guidance on the most practical way forward regarding saturation and more broadly, amendments to the city's municipal code for transient rentals. Excuse me.
So, if I can kind of explain the concept, and this is based upon what the, your discussion was of the last month, you know, you certain, whatever the cap is, let's say you put a certain cap on it, and then if you did want to regulate it via streets, like a street can only have twenty-five percent or fifty percent, or an area can only have twenty-five or fifty percent. What that would be is, then administratively, it'd be like a bunch of buckets, and you'd have, I want you to imagine the city with, you know, three hundred CUPs available, and some streets may already have enough there. And so, if an application comes in and it's on that street, they don't get to come before the commission if, if you're below the overall cap, because that bucket is full, and you go to the next application on a street or area where there's not, you haven't reached, the bucket is not full. And then, so it's constantly looking at, you know, the buckets that you have, and if a bucket is full and they abandon their CUP, then the next up on your list, if there's a vacancy overall on the cap, is the CUP for that street where the bucket has now become less full. So, and again, this is following your direction, and it, it would be interesting to administer, but we could do it.
It sounds like a bunch of buckets. To be honest, I mean...
Following your direction.
Talk about trying to make something that's simple very, very hard. Talk about streets that are oversaturated right now. If you come up with twenty-five percent, there could be fifty percent saturation on the street, so now what happens? Twenty-five of the, twenty-five percent would still have to leave before you put one on there.
Correct, yes.
Wow.
That's if, if...
And, and in the same context, in the same context, over the last ten years, the number of CUPs has not gone up, nor has it gone down, it's pretty much remained constant. What are we doing?
I didn't follow that. So, 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 so let's say that you assume, let's take a hypothetical street, let's say Sumner, and you say, for, for Sumner, the cap is twenty-five percent, and you look at Sumner...
Okay, now, that's based on, we counted all the homes on Sumner...
Exactly.
And twenty-five percent of them are now...
No, you decided cap is gonna be, any, and, and any one street should only have twenty-five percent.
Well, actually, that's different than I think what our proposal was, which, my understanding, since I proposed, was that we counted the number of CUPs on that street, and that is X. And then I said, well, to allow for a little bit of grace, it'd be X plus five percent. So that street, that is, it's not a percentage, other than, it's actually a total number within that street.
Yes, but then there was other discussions about, uh, the total cap was X plus, plus five percent, but then we wanted to put a cap on certain streets.
Right, and that's different than what I understood. So I would, I would, you know, then modify that to go back to, that does make it awfully confusing. The other thing is, and I remember, maybe that's why I didn't understand the point that came up at the last time, because I didn't understand this, was if somebody applied and the, the one issue that if they were able to apply, because there was an opening on the street, the one question that wouldn't apply to them is the saturation question.
Correct.
Because they would have met that criteria. So the other criteria, they still could be denied for other criteria...
Absolutely.
But not saturation.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So, I guess, I'm thinking it really doesn't make sense unless we... So, I guess, I'm thinking it really doesn't make sense unless we pick the buckets by street and say, you know, we do this official inventory that says this or the amount of homes. And in theory, we should be able to count them pretty accurately for each street. So, each street is its own bucket and it has a fixed number. And the reason I said plus 5% is just to make it, you know, not an immediate cap. But then you would only be able to apply as they were removed. Interestingly, I think the way that would play out is as we go through our initial, who isn't using these, there would probably be more openings for the first few years than we would have applications.
Yeah.
Most likely, this cap wouldn't really even kick in.
So.
So, why would we do it?
Why would we do it? And to me, the reason why, it was the same as my analogy last meeting, which is roads and speed limits are, road design and speed limits are sort of done in tandem. You design a road and then you try to have a speed limit maybe five miles an hour less than what that road can handle. But, you know, you don't make a road for 100 miles an hour and then make the speed limit at 50. Since we do have the experience, in a sense, our transient rental road allows this many units. And it seems to be staying pretty stable over the last 30 years. So, this is an acknowledgement of what our limit is and that we are saturated. And it seems to be the right balance, probably pretty balanced even by street. So, it's a way to express how we're gonna maintain this current saturation. So, when people are looking to buy here with the mind that they're going to buy a bunch of properties and start building it up, they're kind of told, well, our speed limit for this road or our amount of saturation is this.
But you really don't have investors that buy here that are just buying to vacation rent because the price of the property in vacation rent doesn't pencil out. Okay? So, you're not making enough money to buy these investments just to service the debt unless you're just paying cash.
And the other is, there's a real community concern that that is gonna happen, that for some reason, people are gonna start driving faster on this road or start buying up a whole bunch of homes and not allowing, you know, and taking away housing. So, in a way, this is the community saying, we're acknowledging this saturation. This is what saturation means. Anyway, that was the idea.
And I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I kind of feel like we need, we're, I kind of feel like I would like more facts and more information regarding who's using and who's not. Because I think right there will help us get a better grip on really what is being sat, what streets are saturated, what is, because, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that have these permits, that haven't paid on them in years, that haven't used them, but yet don't come forward to give them back. So, it's, I think we need, as a city, need to do some digging deep and finding out what truly, what permits are truly active and using them as they're supposed to. And that way, we can really look and see how we want to, I mean, we've, we've been asking, I know it takes a long time, you know, I mean, the manpower and everything. But it's gonna take a lot of manpower to recreate the will. We're, we're like recreating the will all over again when I think we just need enforcement.
And I think.
I mean, we already are.
Amanda, are you getting lots of complaints on properties? Have we seen, since I've been here, I've not seen one property that has had three complaints to it, to the city that has been brought up here about revoking the CUP.
I think we've had one.
Okay.
And I also feel that, I mean, we already took away the factor that transferring with the land, right?
That's in the works.
We're in the process. So, I think that.
A future ones.
Future ones.
So, I think that right there was a big, huge issue because then that whole value and that, you know, the perception of local camp purchasing homes because of the increase. Well, that's already, you know, on its way of changing.
Right. That, that, what facilitates that perception is going to change.
Exactly.
If the council agrees to it.
If the council agrees to it.
Exactly.
But I think if, if we're looking at how many are on a street, let's say there's six on a street and we think six on a street is sufficient, I don't think we want to look at and say, well, six is okay because they don't ever use them. But if they used it a lot, we would only want four. I think if it's granted, it's granted. You've got to assume that the impact is gonna be that it's being used. But I think having.
I understand. I'm just saying, are they complying with the application?
Right.
Are they paying their dues?
Right.
That's what I mean by a active.
An accurate count, right.
See, that's what, I agree with Yoli. That's the thing, we don't know what, we still keep going around. We don't want saturation. We don't want this. Until we have a count, you don't know what you're dealing with.
Well, the challenge is, we've, we've, we've got another round of letters going out today and probably Monday. We're not gonna really know until we hear back from all of those 65 letters.
Yeah, you started.
I mean, it may be six months before we finally hear back from all of them.
We've been doing this for two years.
I know.
Trying to get this.
And I understand.
It takes six months.
Just turning with.
I understand the process and that it's taking long and I get it. But I know that, you know, right now, I just feel like we have made progress. Personally, I feel like we've made progress. It's, it's going to the city council for that, you know, going with the property. So, I feel like it's not gonna happen overnight, but I feel like before we can make all these set decisions and change municipal codes. Personally, I would rather have more information in front of me.
Well, we don't know what we're talking about and to figure out what's going on.
One was, you know, the comment that no one else does this, that doesn't surprise me at all. I don't think anybody has the experience we have.
I would agree.
Yeah, and I think they're struggling with issues the city did 30 years ago.
Right.
So.
You guys are, you guys were way out ahead of any other city.
And that totally makes sense, which is why we're already talking saturation. When we're talking saturation, there is actually a lot of these homes. The other thing is, what I don't think works street by street is Hamilton Cove and Bay of Vista. So, those, I think we would set aside.
Take out of the equation.
And define what those are and why that doesn't work.
There's a couple of things that stand out to me. First of all, if you can come up here and apply for a CUP and get a fair hearing and be granted on the merits of the case as it sits today, it keeps everything above board. When we say there's a limit, the guy that owns a piece of property and is having a hard time making his mortgage, he is not gonna care about your limit. Okay? So, now that pushes it underground, which means we don't collect our 12%. Now, I've sat up here, I've sat in here recently when the city's having meetings on how to increase revenue to the city. All the businesses in town, the revenue has been going down recently. Visitor counts have been going down, this, that, and the other. The city's looking to increase their money. And total tax stands for 55% of the city's general fund. 55%. And we're saying, we want more money, but on the other hand, don't give out any more of these. So, you've, you've basically stopped any area of growth for it. Not that I'm advocating that more people go out and get CUPs. But if you put a moratorium on them, everyone's gonna want one the moment they come up. It's just demand. It's like the car thing. It's the same stuff. You're gonna make people go, well, one came up on my street, I better get it. And right now, you don't have that. You don't have that. You have people that get it when they need it. If they don't use it, if it's not making financial sense, they lease out the property year-round. Or they lease it out to a teacher for nine months out of the year and they come and use it in the summer.
Which used to be what a lot of people did.
It could drive everything up.
You wanna go back 30 years?
Yeah.
I mean, some of you guys weren't here 30 years ago. I could take you back. I grew up on Sumner. There were six occupied houses year-round, okay? And all of Sumner was occupied all summer. But that was before CUPs. But they're grandfathered, right? I mean, I understand that. I mean, if you have a grandfathered CUP, I really, what is the exact definition by the city that they were using it? Because what I read is if that was the use, a rental, vacation rental was the use prior to doing CUPs, they are just flat grandfathered.
But they have to continue the use.
Okay, but.
And they have to exercise the use to keep it.
No, I understand that, but I mean, they have, I live next door to two. And, you know, they, that, they've been doing that, you know, since, since the 60s.
Okay.
They've been doing that. And I'd like to know, so presumably, they don't need to even comply with a lot of the, you know, they have to pay, okay? But, you know, what do they not have to comply with, you know, as far as inspections, which is another thing that bothers me. All of these rules we have, we don't force half of these conditions. And that makes me crazy.
Now, I can say recently.
We charge a lot of money and we don't do what we say, we don't do the inspection.
Now, recently, because I applied for one, they did come out and inspect my house. You know.
John.
Did you fix that problem that you had?
Yeah. Once I got rid of the rodents. But, so, but we go, we go round and round about all this. If you buy a piece of property on the island or you've owned here for 30 years, you shouldn't have different rights than if you just arrived today.
That's my point.
Yeah.
We're trying that it's, and, and.
But I want to.
I'm sorry, this really bothers me still is the definition of a conditional use. If you don't change that conditional use, and if we're still calling them CUPs, I don't see how we can get away with that legally.
What do you mean by legal? I don't understand.
Well, conditional use permit.
Right.
So, you get the use and you continue that use. Now, we're gonna say if you sell it, you lose it? No, the use lies with the property.
No, that's, no, but that's if it's in the zoning code and it's being, would be taken out of the zoning code and put into the license, and it would not be a conditional use.
It will no longer be a land use entitlement.
That we need to, while we're doing this, we need to get a different definition of what we're doing.
Well, that's what it's gonna be. It's not gonna be a conditional use permit. It's gonna be a license.
What do you do with the ones that are existing?
They still transfer.
You, you already decided, the commission already decided that you're not gonna touch the ones that are already there.
That's what I just wanted to say.
So, so if you resold those and those transferred with the land, now this is gonna even make that a little more valuable.
But, but, but not only that, but I mean, I think you're gonna get rid of a lot of them that have permits now. You know, like this, finally, we're sending letters out and finding who's, who's using them, who's not. Well, we had that chart last, you know, the ones, you know, what the, the income was reported, you know.
That they hadn't reported any TOT.
Yeah, well, I mean, so, we had that chart, that tells us.
And those are some of the ones getting letters.
And those were the ones where TOT was reported, I mean, basically.
I think the biggest.
And we had the percentages, that was informative. But we don't know how many.
Prices are definitely gonna go up.
On the list, but did.
And we're gonna make them. Every time the government gets involved in a market, I mean, and this is basic economics, when the government gets involved and tries to control the market, it doesn't work out so well. The market controls itself the best. Actually, that's proven by just the fact that there's the same amount of CUPs here as there were 10 years ago. People come and people go. But they still have a right, when they come into town, to say, hey, I'm gonna use my house, but I'm not gonna use it all the time. Why aren't I opening it up to other people using it?
Right.
As long as they're not bothering their neighbors.
But I think that's an argument that there isn't a saturation issue. So, you know, I mean, if.
Definitely some streets have a lot more than others.
And, and, which makes me think we probably need early direction from city council because, right now, I think we're still arguing, we're arguing two or three things at the same time we're discussing. You know, one is, is there such thing as saturation? And the other is, if there is, what is it? And then we have a proposal on the table. So, but I guess, is there, in the mind of city council, there was a year ago, that saturation really needed to be defined in that the way we are interpreting it was incorrectly?
No, I think city council directed the planning commission to look at CUPs and come up with some recommendations. They didn't have anything in particular, other than they did mention the concept of converting the CUPs to licenses.
So that it didn't transfer.
So, so.
I guess before we spent much time on, you know.
So, what we could do, if that's, if that's commission's direction, is that the next, at an upcoming city council meeting, depending on the agenda, we, we say, okay, here's what the planning commission has decided. One, we're gonna convert these from CUPs to licenses so that they're not gonna run with the land. The second is, the commission is, is interested in the council's direction as to whether you want to spend, us to spend additional time and money putting a cap on all CUPs as well as, and, and if so, is it a numerical cap citywide or is it a cap on certain areas? Like, certain areas are gonna be, and get direction from them before we go. And we'll have, by that time, we might have some information as to how our revocation or abandonment of CUPs is going if we wait until, if we wait until, let's say, the first meeting in October, that'll give us, I don't know, like a month.
Well, and here's the idea, if we can figure all these, or take the most saturated streets and just go and then you can cross-section, you know, you, you know, I mean, Rocio's put the map together, we know the addresses, and then just start looking and see if you got TOT on them or when, or, or if these letters went up, get an answer back or.
And, and that's why I was suggesting, if we wanna do this, we might have a better idea of how these letters work. Because if we do it in September, if they're going out tomorrow, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have that information. We do it in October, in one of the meetings in October, we can get direction on that.
But see, what I, to me, we, we don't know what we're talking about yet. And, and really, we figured out that, that the CUPs aren't the ultimate enemy because there's what, 300? If you take out Hamilton and Bay of Vista, there aren't all that many spread around the rest of the town.
And the city greatly benefits from it. All of us do. We're all employed by it. This is what we do. We're a tourism community.
No, I'm saying, we gotta get a count and tell me, well, we gotta get rid of this, we gotta, what's the saturation? Well, we know who's got a CUP by the streets. We can look at Rocio's map.
But who's using them.
And then we just figure out who's using them or cull those out or, you know, just work with these letters or if this, that, or the other, and figure all of that out. And then we know what we're dealing with. But, you know, there's an awful lot of, I think, underground rentals. I mean, I agree with that, but.
We went, when host compliance went out into the websites and looked out there in the netherworld about who was renting properties, we did not end up with like six that were completely off the books. So, if they're renting underground, they're not doing it through VBRO and HomeAway and all these things that you can go out and look at. So, but my second point is this, once we get done, the letters come in, let's say we get letters from 20 people and they say, we wanna keep our CUP, they're gonna, we're gonna allow them to pay their back taxes. Once you look at saturation, how much that property is rented, in my opinion, is irrelevant.
I agree.
If they have a permit, it's there. So, if there's, if six is too many, then six is too many, whether they're renting it a lot or not at all, because that can change from one month to a next, or from one owner to a next.
No, but the point is just to figure out who is totally not using something.
Right, because we want those off the books.
I had one in my triplex.
Right.
I gave it back.
Right.
I'm assuming it got taken off the books. It's not on her map, so I think I'm off.
You're correct. We need to get an accurate list.
Right.
Just that kind of thing. Then we know what we're dealing with and we know how many, you know, like what I said way back, on Sumner, there were unoccupied houses. They were the same, there were families. And some of those families still own some of those houses. And they don't rent them. But the families get bigger, you know, each generation. And the base start coming back and they're still doing that.
Right.
And that's, that's something that's taking it away. Because if we, what do we think, effectively, maybe there's 300 active CUPs when you take out.
Hamilton's over 100. So, there's a third gone.
So, you take, yeah, you take all that out, then CUPs versus the, the total number of properties here, you know, is, is getting pretty small. So, it's not just the CUP issue, isn't it? It's just people who own properties and, but it used to be that teachers, you know, they, before they started sending them every day, teachers lived here in the winter. Next door to me, teachers, there were always teachers in the winter and.
Which was great for our students.
Is there, is there a way, excuse me, is there a way to, using the best available Is there, is there a way, excuse me, is there a way to, using the best available information without creating anything new, a way to look at maybe the past 30 or significant amount of time, 20, 30 years, the general total of CUPs?
Yes.
So, you know, then, because I think that's pretty powerful.
Because we know when, starting in...
Because anecdotally, we know, but I'm curious...
Is it down?
Is it up or down? Is this...
It used to just be a seasonal community.
Not that important. Or is it, is it an upward curve, a downward curve?
It's been in the, between 300 and 350, probably for the last 15 years.
Wow.
And what we're seeing is that probably 10, 15% of those are, we're, we're dealing with now. They reported zero TOT, so...
Well, see, it's, yeah, and the difference with that is that before, property values are going up. I mean, things in the 60s were really flat, and then things have gone up and down a little, but it's now that, not just us, all over California, I mean, the property values are just, you know, exploding, and that's, it, it, like I say, it used to be that there was some kind of a pattern. And I'll tell a joke, because Denise is here, that I know that her family, and mine too, we had backyards, and my family moved, and, and I know, because her father said this one time, that they did, they camped in a tent in the yard and rented the house in the summer. And my family did that apparently, before I was around, but they did it for 20 years anyway, so to make extra money, you know.
With the saturation, you just have areas of the city that are going to be more susceptible to renting, because there's easiest, easier access. Take the flats, go over to Clarissa Street, those sort of things. That's an easy place if you own a home, that if you were owning one and you wanted to rent it out, that it could happen. Way up in the hills is much tougher, and that's why there's fewer up there, because you can't get back and forth. Hamilton Cove's more like a resort. That's why so many of them get it. The market takes care of this. And we'll be stepping on ourselves for a long time, and I can't imagine how much money to, to set up the bucket system.
Yeah.
This will cost us in legal fees and everything else redoing this whole system. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I'm not.
Two things. One, we have a member of the public here, he probably wants to speak. And two, one thing I want you to consider now, because I may have spoken too quickly about going to the council, the question is, I know, I think we know your general direction and stuff, do you want to be the first to receive the information on what these, what the effect of the record of, of all the letters are before you ask the council the question?
Yeah.
Or, or, or do you, okay, so then we can do that in October, at the October meeting, we'll have, hopefully, the results of our letter-writing campaign, and then at that meeting, we can then discuss what we want to bring to the council. And then we'll also have some commissioners that aren't here today that may have different opinions.
And it, that sounds, that makes a lot of sense. Plus, it's not really that urgent, I mean, based on the information for the last...
Again, other, 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 other planning commissioners who are not here may beg to differ.
Right, and I think that's, if we can pull together a little chart that shows over time, would might be an indication of how urgent this issue is.
So, so we'll, we'll do that?
Yeah, waiting for some other...
And just the fact that it's all through town, that, you know, that's not going to run with the land and no more CUPs, you're, we're getting them every month now, where, you know, we didn't. So it's typical that now, you know, they panic, and now everybody wants them, and now they're going to, you know, those permits are going to transfer with, it's just...
I got to say, the members that are up here have been here for more than six months. So we've seen this before, we've done this before. We got two new members on that have changed the whole dynamic that we need to go attack this thing like it's been attacking us. It doesn't seem to be that way. So we're, you know, we're, we're speaking for a minority of the members, basically, by, by going after this, and we're spending money on your time going after this as well. I mean, coming up with all this stuff, researching, I'm sure it's not free. I, we're spinning our wheels.
And with that being said, I also feel like, I feel with FART as well, with supply and demand. Now, we're going to not let these run with the land. Now, guess what? You just jacked up the prices, the housing prices way high.
But you can still get a permit.
And that's not the point.
If you want to rent your property to pay your mortgage, you can still get a permit.
But I understand what you're saying, but it's...
But if we go to saturation and all this other stuff and come up with...
But it has to do with, now what, you, then, then we're going to do the saturation, you might not get a permit for years, like the car.
That is a second layer of criteria.
That's what I'm saying. So that's what, they think they're going to bring the prices down in housing by changing everything. In fact, it's going to drive it right really high up. It's going to, it's going to shoot us in the foot, I, I can tell you that. But, that, I'm just one opinion. So, okay, now...
Can I just add one thing, and then I'm done too?
Sure.
I just wanted to say something. I just wanted to add, the only thing I want to add to all this is just all the work that you guys are putting together, and then October, I just want to say that the ones that totally defaulted, that we do something about those immediately.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can work with your, your system here, but let's get rid of all the ones that never answered your, because if I was getting a car, I'm only allowed 45 days to respond, and I'm also, I could have been on it for 27 years, 45 days. So let's make it cut and dry too.
And, and just, and just so you know, we are prepared to do that, but because these are CUPs and not licenses, we have to have a public hearing for revocation. If they don't give them up, so what, what may happen is during the months of November and December, during the time period when, you know, you're not hearing any new developments, we'll just convene the CUP Revocation Board, AKA Planning Committee.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'm opening up to the public, let anyone care to speak up.
Wake up, Bob.
Please state your name and address.
Bob Kennedy, 374 Whitley. I like the fact that you're carrying on the conversation. What I like even more than that is the fact that you guys are calm, and you're realizing that for every action, there's a reaction, and do your homework before you make a hasty decision. So as a taxpayer, a member of the community, thank you for that.
Thank you, Bob Kennedy. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
So we'll be back.
Okay.
So we're going to come back with, I would also, I was going to also look at how much TOT we've collected over the past five to 10 years, whatever Matt can give me fairly easily, to see if that has fluctuated significantly. Then we're going to see how the units have been approved and what number. We can go back to the beginning on those numbers and hope to come see, get some responses from the letters. So we'll have that information in October as well.
I want to add that we might, the letters going out tomorrow and Monday, we added that the respondents have to be back to us by October 20th, so we might hear it in November.
So we gave them a deadline to let us know.
That's a deadline.
It'll be a long winter.
Yeah.
Is that, is that before the meeting?
That's actually, yeah, that's after the meeting, so...
After the October meeting?
Yes.
And thank you, Amanda and Scott.
No, actually, the October meeting is the 16th.
One other thing...
We don't hear from the, from then until the 20th.
Can we change it to the 11?
No, I already printed everything out.
Okay. I understand we're going to be missing one of the commissioners that's up here today. I, I would like to say it's been a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you, Cindy, very much.
I've enjoyed the fact that you keep an open mind for everything that comes in front of us, and we can have discussions, not always agree or disagree, but we always remain friendly and have, you know, you will be missed.
Thank you for my pleasure.
Definitely.
Working with you guys.
Thank you for your time.
You can still watch us on the computer if you want.
And I'm moving to Maui.
Right on.
And we've been, you know, planning, all my family is out there now, so that's where I'll be, if you ever come out on vacation.
I'll be there November.
You will definitely be called.
If you'll come on a tour, so, thank you though for everything you guys have done for me too.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you for your service, Cindy. Okay, any commissioner business? No?
I will not be here next month. If there is, I don't know what's on the agenda, but if there's an attorney needed, it'll be Megan Garibaldi.
Okay.
Great last name.
She's been with us before.
Yeah, she has.[1728.13]